Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of July 23rd, 2025. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cor.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coleman.
Here.
Councilmember Bashir Tash.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. We're especially glad to have our Bakersfield Youth Jobs Program interns and fellows with us, and we're gonna have them engage in the civic process tonight and then ask a bunch of questions afterwards. But thank you all for being here, and to the rest of you, welcome. We had the pleasure tonight of having Pastor Saul Gonzalez, pastor of Lifehouse Church, to offer the invocation. Pastor, thank you so much for your church's engagement in our community. I know that you serve so many and have so many outreaches for the betterment of all of our residents. Following the invocation, Eric Ruva-Caba, who's a junior at Bakersfield High School, will lead us in the pledge. He's a City Hall intern for our Economic and Community Development Department, a member of the Four Dimension, which is a big deal, ASB Class Treasurer. He's a peer tutor with a 4.3 GPA tutoring Spanish-speaking students, and he's a member of the Local Control Advisory Council and the Avid Student Council, seven years playing the violin, first-generation college student, and Eric wants to be a surgeon. So look at all those aspirations and accomplishments. Would you all please stand?
Thank you for the honor. Let us pray. Father, there is a name, a man by the name of Jabis. The mom named him Jabis because the birthing was a difficult birthing, and a lot of great things, valuable things, happen through the birthing process and through sometimes pain. So we thank you that, as you lead this council to lead the people of this community, which are your people, and as they conduct your business for your people, we pray that this council will enjoy wisdom, solomonic wisdom, divine direction, the right contextualization, compartmentalization, and the concentration to kind of know what to do next, and that comes from you, that kind of direction comes from you. And Jabis prayed this prayer, "Oh, God bless us, bless me." And then, would you enlarge the territory, the influence of every member, council member, the Honorable Karen Go, our mayor, and everyone here? Would you enlarge our vision, our capacity for more? Would you enlarge our hunger for you? And with your blessing. Blessing and enlargement is not enough. We would like for you to accompany us. He says, "Would you be with me? Would your hand would be with me?" That's a personal relationship with the God of Israel. And then lastly, would you protect me? Bless me, enlarge me, be with me, protect me. And I pray that that would be the prayer of every person in this place and this city council, that we would enjoy that kind of divine blessing. And then, the word of God says, and God granted his request. In our Lord's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Thank you Pastor Saul and Eric, and you're welcome to either stay or leave at this time. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos for safety reasons, and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, hate speech, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, and outbursts from the audience. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Scott Thigerson, CEO of Kern Medical, declaring August 2025 as Valley Fever Awareness Month in Bakersfield.
Yes, all of you. Whoever wants to. With Valley Fever being unique to our area in Arizona, we are so blessed that we have the Valley Fever Center, the Valley Fever Center, right here, and just so grateful for the late Dr. Hans Einstein's investment here, Dr. Royce Johnson, and our whole Kern Medical team, that we have people who really are championing something that other voices in the United States really don't champion because of its uniqueness. Thank you so much for all the research and the efforts that you've put forward. So today, it's my honor to issue this proclamation. Whereas Valley Fever is a progressive multi-symptomatic respiratory infection and debilitating disease caused by fungal spores that exists in the soil, and whereas Valley Fever attacks the respiratory system, causing infections that lead to symptoms resembling many common infections, including cough, fever, or fatigue, and whereas the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical is committed to increasing education and awareness for the public, patients, and healthcare providers, and whereas it is vital that residents and visitors alike are aware of the existence and symptoms of Valley Fever, so that if an infection is contracted, early treatment may be administered. And whereas the Valley Fever Institute at Kern Medical also remains dedicated to magnifying this growing epidemic, educating the public on the importance of early diagnosis, and meeting the needs for clinical care and research by healthcare professionals, now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim August 2025 as Valley Fever Awareness Month in our city, and urge all residents to be educated and aware of the threat Valley Fever poses, and lend support to finding a cure for this potentially deadly disease. It's my honor to present this to Scott Thigerson. Thank you so much, and please introduce all of your colleagues and take as much time as you would like.
Well, maybe not all the time I'd like. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. It's an honor to be before all of you. I think last year, when we were here, the person that led the flag salute was also interested in a career of medicine, so it's great that it's someone else. Our general surgery residency has restarted and is alive and well, and so we'd be more than happy to be introduced to the young man at a point in time, so that we can help him in his pathway and interest in becoming a physician. I'm honored to stand here and represent Kern Medical and its efforts, but more importantly, I'd like to honor Dr. Johnson, who has given his career to medicine, to care, to education. Most of the physicians who have come to this community likely have passed through the doors at Kern Medical and were introduced to this wonderful community because of the educational programs there, and nearly all of those physicians have had training and education from Dr. Johnson. In addition to that commitment, he has been leading a lifetime, and while he will humbly say, standing on the shoulders of others, but in trying to solve this puzzle of this terrible disease that can have just immense awful impacts on individuals' lives. With that, I'd like to ask Dr. Johnson to share a few words.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, guests, thank you very much for this. I think part of the goal of the Valley Fever Institute is public education, as well as professional education, patient education, patient-centered care, patient-centered research. So trying to get the message out to the public is extremely important, and I appreciate you giving us the Valley Fever Awareness Month in August. So thank you so much.
Order together?
Please, that'd be wonderful. And to everyone who can enjoy the walk which we have. All together. Depending on the item, I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify as specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you'll be called first to speak. Statements are given, a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you'll be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we have received five speaker cards for items not on the agenda. The first speaker is Daryl Terrell.
Thank you, Kern Medical team. Welcome. Would you please adjust the microphone? There you go. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. My name is Daryl Terrell, and Honorable members of Bakersfield City Council, I am a resident of the city of Reno Valley in Riverside County. Just last week, down the street, before the Honorable County Board of Supervisors, I successfully advocated the first reading of a proposed catalytic converter unlawful possession ordinance back in 2022 in this chamber. This is a team body considered a similar ordinance. Councilmember Arias, Councilmember Gonzalez, Councilmember Smith, you were right in 2022 to move that ordinance forward, and I'm asking you to move it forward today. For the past three years, I stood in the city council chambers and county boardrooms across Southern and Central California, fighting to protect hard-working families from this crime that continues to hurt our working families every single day. I met a single mom who walked outside one morning, ready to take her kids to school, only to find her catalytic converter stolen. She missed work and she lost income. I spoke with a retired veteran who couldn't make it to his VA appointment because thieves struck in the night. He told me, "I serve my country, but I never thought I would feel unprotected." These are the faces of this issue. Now, here's the challenge. State law AB 641 creates a legal loophole that allows thieves to steal up to eight catalytic converters and no consequences. No kidding. I have spoken to deputies about this, and they told me they have come across people that had the catalytic converters in their car with the tools in it. They had nothing they could do about it because it didn't meet the threshold of the AB 641. So what I'm here tonight is that we can close that by adopting that 2022 Catalytic Converter Unlawful Possession Ordinance, to give your officers the tools they need to arrest a person, to hold them accountable for stealing catalytic converters from hard-working families. And that's what I'm here to ask you to do, is to consider that ordinance and please go thoroughly, because you already did it. It's time to go further, so we all could be on the same page, so we could be where Kern County has already done. We all in this county, because even in my own county, we have 28 cities in my county. We are all on the same page with the county of Riverside. I advocated that because I had a friend at my job who got his catalytic converters stolen, and nothing they could do about it. But we can do something about it today. It's to hold people accountable, these thieves that's in our community, and let Sacramento know that we don't play. When you attack one of our people, you attack all of us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Robert Hooks.
Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Robert Hooks. So I'm following up on the city budget meeting a couple of meetings ago, where the comment was made that the budget wasn't cut enough and that we should rely on philanthropy and nonprofits to cover more non-infrastructural types of services. So I was curious about it and did a little research and found out that it's just seriously a bad idea. And I'm just going to read a few things. So essentially, there's no real transparency or oversight over services that come that way. It provides unstable services because of short-term and volatile funding. You weaken the ability to respond to crises. There's really, these boards are accountable to their donors as opposed to the public, donor-driven priorities. There's a very long list. I'm not going to read everything that I printed out for you guys. But then Kern County has additional challenges in that, you know, we're not exactly a wealthy county, so we actually traditionally compete poorly for grants, and then basically we run the risk of further entrenching inequality. And so, inasmuch as I do believe that nonprofits and philanthropy, excuse me, has its place in the community, you know, gutting our public services is really dangerous and irresponsible.
Thank you, Mr. Hooks. Next speaker, please.
I'm sorry, Inez Yaresti. And followed by Anthony Beckman and Irene Saratos.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself. You can go ahead and just sit down and, yeah, right there in the front, that's fine. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Inez Yaresti. Today, we're going to speak to you and get your support and funding for an issue within our community. Together with Councilwoman Audrey Gonzalez, we are a part of a group of summer interns that focuses on evident, sorry, on evident problems in our neighborhood. We made the decision to address the issue of stray animals, and as a result, we have developed a system that rewards community members who continue to address the apparent problem. As shelters fill up daily, Bakersfield pet population continues to overrun the streets. We have collaborated with nearby shelters that would help us from a publicity perspective. So we do have organizations supporting our goal of reducing this problem. We view the issue of stray dogs as a cascading effect, as fewer and fewer owners spay and neuter their pets for reasons like fees, the misconception of masculinity, or simply pure laziness. We have observed that when animals are not spayed, their health and various behavioral problems cause a number of other issues, which ultimately cause them to run away and breed at uncontrollably high rates.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Anthony Beckman. I hope all is well. The excessive dog numbers subsequently result in everyday euthanasia rates, as the shelters are compelled to attempt to take in an excessive number of dogs, and their institutions are continuously under a great deal of stress. As a result, at least 10 dogs are euthanized at nearby shelters every morning. We are aware about the municipal code, which was first put into effect by the City of Bakersfield in December 2023, which requires all dogs ordered in six months to be spayed or neutered, with the exception to those who have a breeder's permission or certification for unaltered animals. In order to make locals feel less pressured to breach the law, we would like to see that act put into effect more often. As shelter capacity continues to run out, the number of dogs being put down is increasing. In 2024, at the Kern County Animal Shelter, 6,133 dogs were brought in last year, and 2,971 of those dogs were put down. Also in 2024, the Bakersfield Animal Shelter was told that they would be given $100,000 a year for three consecutive years by the City of Bakersfield. Although the shelter received the funds for the first year, they have yet to receive the funding for years two and three due to budget cuts. As a result, the shelter staff continue to struggle with the growing amount of daily operations and public services for animals. With rising costs of daily living, people find it difficult to pay an average of $250 to $1,000 to spay or neuter their pet. This proposal seeks funding from the Bakersfield City Council to support the establishment of an awareness campaign and operation of a low-cost or free spay and neuter mobile clinic aimed at addressing the growing issue of animal overpopulation in our community.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Irene Saratos. We hope that our suggestion will help you realize how urgent it is to address this problem in our community. Throughout this period, it will be essential to educate the residents of Bakersfield about the repercussions of failing to spay and neuter their dogs, which will be made possible with your help. By putting in place a possible incentive system, we hope to gain your cooperation in engaging our community members to actively bring in their animals. We intend to use our incentive plan to offer a few weeks throughout the year where those who bring in their animals for spaying and neutering can be rewarded with a financial incentive that will be paid by our city. This will make it possible to convince the members of our community to bring in their animals to further support their health. It is our belief that the city council is the first step in improving the welfare of animals in our neighborhood, as we work to improve the lives of animals in our neighborhood and the city of Bakersfield. We hope to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And to all three of you, thank you for your remarks. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, these are three of 12 of my summer interns, and throughout the summer, they've been engaging in a project-based internship. So rather than making copies, reading mail, and answering phones, these high school and college students are actually assigned an issue, and then they go off and they research it, and they talk to community stakeholders, and they find policy solutions that they then can recommend or take action on. And so this is just one of three different groups, and I just could not be prouder of the three of you. Thank you so much for your professionalism, for coming to the council. I did not spoon-feed them at all. They did all of their research. They came up with recommendations on their own, and they wrote these remarks completely independent of me, and again, I'm just super proud of you. And I will make a referral tonight based on your recommendations, that we look at ways in which we can build upon those ordinances that the city council has established, the breeder ordinances, and also look at ways in which we might be able to program some sort of incentive that might work as a pilot, so that we can see if that actually encourages individuals who otherwise wouldn't spay and neuter their animals to actually take that action, because we know that this issue of overpopulation is a slow-burning issue that has been endemic in this community for far too long, for decades now. And quite honestly, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing for our region, and so I would like us to really get a handle on it, and that's sort of what we were trying to do when we passed these ordinances just a few years ago, but I think now is the time for us to build upon it. And so I'm going to make that referral. Mr. Clag, I'm not sure exactly what committee you would prefer going to. I'm completely open, but I would like us to add this to our list of issues.
Yeah, I think Councilmember noted, I think probably safe and healthy neighborhoods is what would be my recommendation. We can clarify that with Chair Arias offline, but we'll work on the referral.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, and thank you again. Thank you for your work. Great job.
City Clerk, next speaker, please.
Mayor Go, we have no more speaker cards regarding non-agenda items, and we have not received any speaker cards regarding agenda items.
Thank you. Next item.
Consent calendar, items 7A through 7I, staff memorandums have been received for item 7E9, correcting the subject line, and item 7E19, correcting the subject line.
Thank you. And colleagues, I haven't received any requests for recusal or to have anything pulled. Vice Mayor?
Motion to adopt consent agenda.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. We have some of our new colleagues, staff members, at the city clerk's council tonight, and so we're certainly willing to give them the time they need to learn. We all have to learn at some point. Thank you. Next item, please.
Hearings, item 9A, mitigated negative declaration pertaining to the consolidation of South Kern and Old River Mutual Water Companies into the City of Bakersfield Water System.
Thank you, Mr. Clag.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just would note that this is an item that your council has been briefed on during the budget workshops, as other briefings as well. Staff is available to answer questions and provide additional information if necessary, but I'll ask our Water Resources Director, Chris Budek, to just provide a brief summary of this item. But as you've seen a presentation a few times, we didn't plan to do that presentation again unless there's additional questions by council. Ms. Budek.
Good evening, Mayor Go and council. This hearing is scheduled to discuss the mitigated negative DEC, MND, much easier to say, for the South Kern Old River Mutual Water District Consolidation Project. The purpose of the project is to provide water service to the two mutuals by extending our existing water service line approximately one mile, and then provide the distribution lines to the homes. And so we have prepared the environmental document as part of the project, or I'm sorry, the MMD as part of the project, and this evening we have Leslie Owens with us from Helix, if there's any specific questions about the document itself, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions about the project if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Budek. At this, going to open up the public hearing, and then want to take public comment, too. At this time, public hearings, item 9A is open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Please come to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. This would be the time. Know that we've received a request from Mr. Banducci. We're going to have in opposition, and then I'll invite for those in support. Is there anyone in opposition? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please step to the microphone and proceed. Mr. Banducci, are you in support, or would you like to offer comments? I see that you've submitted a speaker card. Welcome. Please adjust the microphone to your level, and go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Gavin Banducci, and I own a property, well, actually, the LLC that I manage owns a property in that affected area, and I am looking forward to the city coming in and bringing fresh drinking water into that area. I just want to let you know that, because it is important to me. My daughter actually lives in the house that is affected, so it's kind of double, you know, as a homeowner and as a father. So if you guys can get to it, the sooner the better. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Banducci. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Colleagues, I don't see any requests to speak. So Vice Mayor?
Motion to approve the mitigated negative declaration.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's statements.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I had one referral and some comments. First, the referral. For many years, I've worked in development and worked with the city's ordinance regarding mineral rights and mineral setbacks to wells and oil well sites, and it seems like we can improve on that. So I would like to make a referral to the Housing and Community Development Committee for the city manager and city attorney's office to review. The city of Ventura and the city of Huntington Beach have codes that relate to the development of parcels with exploratory oil wells, which I don't think we address. And following committee review, bring back recommendations to the city council for options on updating our code regarding oil wells. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the state of the city that we went to last week. Great job by Mr. Clegg and the mayor. Really appreciate the work both of them did. The mayor's presentation really showed that, you know, the momentum that we have downtown and, you know, great things that are going on there. Mr. Clegg mentioned, I liked the presentation in that, you know, we've always talked about 100 police from Mezurin, and he pointed out that we have actually 120 more police out on the streets because of the way we've moved things around. And we've had great success in fighting crime. Homicides are down, and violent crime is way down. We still have the problem with the sheriff's office, and we're catch and release with 80% of our quality of crime people back out on the streets in 24 hours. So that is our number one issue, and I know staff's working on that and really would like to see some progress. Also, he pointed out that traffic deaths over the last three years are twice what are homicides are. And so obviously, we need to continue the work in that area, but a lot of success and still a lot of work to do. So really appreciate the state of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. I don't see any other requests. You know, the number 30 is a big number, and there's somebody who has been with us for 30 years, 30 years keeping the city out of trouble. And tonight, I'd just like to celebrate our city attorney, Jenny Gennaro. Jenny, stand up. I want to embarrass you. Would you give her a round of applause? It's her 30th anniversary. We really appreciate you, Jenny. That's a long service. That just doesn't happen these days, and we really appreciate you. And so with no other request to speak, we stand adjourned at 5:49. And fellows and interns, just so you know, this is not normal. We normally have much longer meetings. So you're writing a report or just taking notes. This doesn't happen. Is that true, Pete from the Californian? Sort of. Last week was an exception, but thank you. I'll meet with you in just a second.